I want to welcome everybody for coming to the meeting. My name is Richard McCarthy, Norfolk Town Planner. You might have seen me on TV locally. We have hopefully entertaining and educational public workshop tonight. We greatly appreciate you coming. We have MAPC, which is the Metropolitan Planning Council. So they've been hired by the town to do the master plan. We have a master plan steering committee who's going to be guiding the master plan. There is opportunities to participate from this point forward in a more engaged role, if you like. We call them master plan ambassadors. Some members are actually on the steering committee that need to be available for quorum and so forth. But if you, hopefully you find this interesting and fascinating, you want to participate as we go forward, please do so. The other public meetings, but the master plan steering committee meets as part of the, as the planning board meetings which are held on Tuesday evening. So welcome to participate. I think what we would like to do is for the steering committee members, they can just self-introduce themselves and you can see the name and the face. And that will probably be a nice way to go so you can see who they are, your fellow residents who are participating on the master plan steering committee. And, oh, sure, we'll pass the, and we'll pass the mic around maybe, huh? You don't need a mic? All right.
My name is Joe Burke. I live in the Lafayette Estates section since 1985. I'm 71, so I'm retired. My kids started growing up in the downtown Allison. I live in the, uh, the office. So, uh, I'm here. 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 Uh, I'm here.
Hey, everybody. I apologize, I can't stand, but my name's Gary Sullivan. I'm a member of the planning board committee, sitting on the steering committee for this as well. Very interested in both Norfolk's farm-first mentality coupled with economic development. I think master plan plays into that very well.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Mayo. I am the associate member on the planning board and I'm also on the master plan steering committee. Okay.
Hello, Eric Diamond, 340 Main Street and on the planning board for about a year now. Also a member of the Norfolk Lions and have two kids in town.
You did nice job with your boys. Thank you.
I don't eat hell. Thank you, Rich. Good evening, everybody. Kevin Calcutt, former planning board member, current Norfolk Lion, current select board member. I do have a gaggle of children in the school system here, so very interested and invested in the future and very much looking forward to this process so we can start laying out the future of Norfolk.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jen Patori. I live on Ridge Road. It's going to be four years that I've lived in Norfolk this summer, two young kids, and we love it and I'm looking forward to working on this committee.
I think I've, I don't think I missed, I think I got everybody in the steering committee that's here. So I'm going to pass the mic to Josh and let you carry the presentation from here.
Thank you, Rich. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Josh Fiallo, principal planner at MAPC, the Metropolitan Planning Council, as Rich mentioned, joined by Andrea Harris Long, colleague here and many of our staff out in the audience too, so we're glad to see you all out there with us, a good audience in fact, so thank you for taking the time this evening. We've got an interactive meeting. The purpose of this session really is to get feedback from you all to guide the master plan, to help us figure out what direction we should be taking the content of the plan in. We'll be giving you a beef, a brief introduction to set the groundwork and really give you the background needed to have the conversation this evening, an overview of the master plan itself, some of the topics that we're covering and some of the initial challenges that we've seen in conversations we've been having so far. And that will seed conversations, conversations with you all around the tables to really hear from you about what you're having, your daily experience in Norfolk is like and how that should be a part of the master plan and where we should be taking both the vision for the town and some of the solutions and goals as part of this process. We'll be focused on priorities and vision in a second round of community discussion out there at the tables and then give you a feel for the contours of this process over the timeline and what the next steps look like. So let's start off with a brief master plan introduction. Rich got us rolling on that. There are some additional master plan steering committee members who are not in the audience this evening. You can see all those names on the screen now, including some of the master plan ambassadors that Rich mentioned. And we have good representatives for that group this evening who just introduced themselves. We're very happy to be working with this dedicated group of volunteers who are also residents and involved in various ways in the town and live in a variety of precincts and locations. So good, good points and perspectives on the town. To match with those local volunteers, we have our MAPC team who are across a variety of specialties, transportation, housing, economic development, land use, zoning, public health, arts and culture, and everything in between, really all of the disciplines needed to serve the town's master plan well. And we bring those specialties together in and across our staff and have a really great team who are working with the town on this effort. So you see, maybe if we could just do, we won't do passing the mic for our own staff, but maybe just raise your hands so people can see the staff that are present and who are going to help us with the conversation this evening around those tables. So first, I just wanted to clue you all in. You should have at your tables a QR code. You can also, if you're an intrepid phone user, you could point it at the screen and grab that. One of the things that we're trying to do along the way in this process is track the people who are engaging with this process. This initial survey tells us a little bit about yourself, demographics, where you live in Norfolk, your age, things like that, so that we can understand who is in the room and that will help us figure out who we need to reach out to as this process goes along. So if you wouldn't mind taking that, if you have a moment this evening, either now or later, and we'd appreciate that, just to give us a feel for who we're seeing or not seeing, and then we can adjust our outreach accordingly. So Andrew's going to give us a little bit of breakdown on the master plan overview now to give you the context for where we're headed.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. Hi, everyone. It's really nice to see a full room tonight, so thanks for coming out. Before we break into the small groups and hear from you, because that is really what we want to do tonight, we wanted to make sure that we all knew what a master plan is. I'm sure that you all have read the master plan. It's very fun reading. It's, you know, something that you really want to pick up on. But if you're not familiar with the Norfolk master plan, the town already does have a master plan, so they're updating the existing plan. And what a master plan really is, is it's a way for a town or a city to kind of set a roadmap for future actions, investments, policies, things that you want to do. It covers a wealth of topics, so you can see those here, everything from economic development to housing to land use, historic and cultural resources. It's a really good way to really assess where you are, like Josh was saying, the issues and challenges and the opportunities that you have, and then think about what your goals are for these different topic areas and different strategies to achieve those goals. And then, of course, the biggest part is how you implement those goals and strategies. It's really important that this process is geared by the community. You know, we're here to help facilitate this process, but we really want it to be geared by the steering committee and you all as residents and community members. And at the simplest way of thinking about a master plan, we like to think of it in these kind of three big stages. You first have to identify your issues that are facing your community, the challenges that you want to address through your master planning process. Then you want to think about what solutions a town can take with, you know, keeping in mind that you have a finite amount of resources, a finite amount of staff to do the work. And then really lay out that implementation plan or a roadmap for what you're going to do over the next 10 or 20 years to accomplish your goals. So tonight, we're here focusing on the issues, this first part of the process. So we, as the MAPC team, has been, we've been doing a lot of existing conditions data analysis. Josh will share some of that in a minute. We've also been having a lot of conversations already with a lot of town officials, so town staff, a lot of the volunteers on your different boards and committees, to get a sense for what are the priorities and issues that are already in the works. And then lastly, we want to hear from you all. So tonight, we're hoping to get even more feedback from you as just your experience as a resident and a community member to help us understand really what those issues are. The master plan is really interesting for Norfolk because you all already have a master plan, you're already doing a lot of good work, and so we see the master plan as an opportunity to refine and build on the work that you all have already been doing. So we know that you are really focused on sustainable growth patterns that preserve the rural character, the things that you love about Norfolk that makes Norfolk special. So we see the master plan as building on what you've already been doing. You know, you're expanding housing options in smart ways, you're leveraging the town assets that you have, you're preserving those open spaces that are so important to you, you're making sure that you're investing your town money wisely and making wise public investments, you're encouraging mixed-use stuff where it's appropriate, you know, in your town center, near the rail. And then you're making sure that the town is providing good quality services and facilities and maintaining those. So how can the master plan continue to do that work over the next 10, 20 years and facilitate that? And lastly, it's really important to keep in mind that this cannot just be a pie-in-the-sky type of plan, but that it needs to be something that's realistic and cost-effective and can be implemented. So some of the things that we're doing to make sure that as we are helping facilitate and work with you all through this process, we, because we're the regional planning agency, we work with a lot of different communities and we can bring kind of what's working and not working in other places and give those as options and, you know, ideas for you all to think about as potential strategies down the road. We like to facilitate a lot of conversations like this in public forums. We'll be doing a lot of other engagement events to try to reach different people, as Josh mentioned. And then towards the end of the process, we'll be having meetings like this to help us figure out what's the most priority for you, so that, you know, you don't have a laundry list at the end of this process, but know where to start. We want to make sure that we can, you know, hear from you, what's the top thing on your list that you want the planning board and other folks to start on once the master planning process is done. So now I'll turn it back over to Josh to talk about our next part.
So we always find at the beginning of a process like this, the easiest place to start is unfortunately maybe sometimes, but with some negativity. So we can, the first step here is to just kind of work with you all to get every challenge and issue that's out, that has maybe crossed your path in the town and talk through that. We've, as Andrea mentioned, done some initial work, so we have looked at the past plans that are available. The last master plan in Norfolk was in 2007, so that's, it is dated now, but we've been building upon that work. We've also done our own new data analysis using US Census data and other town sources, done some mapping using GIS and other data sources to spatially analyze relationships in the town, where resources are, what needs to be happening, looking at the roadway and circulation connections. And then have also done 25, more than 25 interviews with town staff, the town administrator, town leadership, and leadership of committees, boards, and commissions. So that's been a very good way for us to understand a lot of the issues and patterns that the town's facing, but that may not be the same, there's hopefully some overlap, but might not be the same as the issues that you're facing in your daily life. So we want to hear some about that. What we've heard from those initial conversations include things like the recently approved fire station, keeping pace with the public facilities in terms of the town's growth and the services that it provides. That also relates to the schools and keeping track of the increasing school population and making sure that the town is having facilities to work with that. Thinking about the housing options in the town, particularly more affordable options, starter home options, options for seniors to stay in the town who might not be able to afford to stay in their home over the long term. Also looking at other social services, commercial services, or things that might not be in the town where you have to go to an adjacent municipality to maybe do some of those things. And then we've heard a lot about walkability and the lack of sidewalks in certain areas as well. So those are some of the challenges, just to give you a taste, and we'd like you to round out this list for us. Just a snapshot of some of that data that we've been looking at. The town is about 11,600 people these days, so that's larger than it has been in the past and it continues to keep inching toward more and more residents. The residential diversity is mostly a white community, but there are, you know, I would say the residential diversity is growing over the last census counts, and that's a pattern we're seeing in the town. It's also a home to businesses and jobs, and we've seen a fair amount of growth in the 115 and 1A area and down in B1 as well, in the town center, in terms of the small businesses and the jobs that come along with those. The housing across the population, it's about 3,000 households. Most of that is homeownership. There's just a small percentage of rental units in the town, and that also may complicate some of the housing options people have. Relatively well-to-do town in terms of its median income, 159,000 thereabouts as the household income for families. And then that doesn't include every household, of course. There are 739 cost-burden households, meaning households that spend 30% or more of their income on housing costs. Here's a snapshot of the transportation network in the town today. You can see the lines on this map are actually the sidewalk network or pedestrian network with trails and sidewalks, not on all streets, but is getting filled in over the years. Nonetheless, 87% of workers are driving alone to destinations for work. 10% of workers take transit, although that may have shifted a little downward from the pandemic and I don't think it's quite recovered just yet. So that's a part of the infrastructure network we're looking at. Also, the community services and facilities, mostly clustered around the town center, but there are community parks and playgrounds and community open spaces in town-owned properties throughout the town as well. So enough, enough of the groundwork lain, and we'd like to shift now to some of the group discussion that we've set up for you this evening, and we've got our staff to guide you through that, and Andrea will lay out how that's going to work.
Yeah, thanks. So you may have noticed there's a lot of paper on your tables, so we've tried to put together some activities to get different kinds of input from you all tonight. So the staff members that are at each of your tables will kind of be walking you through these different exercises. But as Josh mentioned, the first one is really focusing on what are the main issues. So you have two sheets of paper that have kind of those eight buckets of topics that we have in the master plan. So whenever I finish going over these instructions at your small tables, we'd love for you to, you know, write down maybe one or two issues on a Post-it and put it in based on the topic area. Maybe it's you want more jobs in Norfolk, so that would be an economic development issue, for instance. So think about what your issues might be. You can do as many as you want. Add those to the sheets that are on your table. And then once you've kind of collectively added your issues, then there are dots that you can go around and put like your top one or two issues. It may be things that you wrote, or maybe your neighbor said something that you're like, oh, that is maybe a bigger issue than what I thought of. So this will help us to understand what the issues are for you all and then also what your top priority issues are. So that's the first exercise. And then after we spend about 15 minutes doing that, there's a map that we have that we want to get a sense for. What are things that you are already doing in Norfolk? Maybe it's working here, shopping here, you're going to the Y or, you know, recreation activities here, other places. What can you do in town and what are you leaving Norfolk for that you may want to do here that you don't have options to do? We just want to get a sense for what activities are happening and what's happening in and out of town. So that'll be the second activity that you all can do at your small tables, and that'll take about maybe 10 or so minutes. And then afterwards, we'll do some polling with some fun online polling to kind of get a sense for what all of the tables are hearing. So we'll facilitate that after you've been able to discuss. But I think for now, we'll turn it over to your small groups and you can kind of talk amongst yourselves and our staff will kind of help you through this exercise.
All right. We're seeing some responses to our Poll Everywhere already, which is great. Good sign for us that it's working and folks are figuring out the Poll Everywhere technology. But if you haven't yet, I'll give you, give everyone maybe 30 seconds to wrap up the conversation at their tables and then we'll walk through the instructions for getting linked up to this and do a little debrief. 30 more seconds for everyone. So if you're not already connected to Poll Everywhere, there are two ways you can get connected and the instructions are shown on a piece of paper at each of your tables. I would recommend joining by web. It's just a little bit easier to interact that way. What you're going to do is on your phone or internet-connected device, go ahead and open a web browser, put in pollpoev.com, and that's listed at the top of the screen as well. And there should be a bar where you can enter in a code. That's going to be MAPCPOLL. The other option is to send a text to MAPCPOLL, and you want to text the number 22333. So once you have that all set up, and again, there are staff at each of your tables who can help you with the tech, we just want to, we're curious to hear sort of what you all discussed at your tables. Just for the sake of time and to move us along, we're going to do it in this sort of tech, high-tech way. But the question is, what was the biggest challenge you heard at your table? So thinking back to, you know, this map activity as well as the brainstorm with the Post-its at the beginning, you might all have talked a little bit about, you know, using those dot stickers to identify what you think is the biggest challenge. So letting us know through the Poll Everywhere, so as a group, we can sort of see whether there are any themes coming up, major challenges that we should really be paying attention to, that folks have been bringing up. So we're seeing lack of recreation department offering, social services, taxes, I think, came up a few times. I'll give everyone a few seconds to get connected.
They should be able to text right from there.
Yes. So the other thing I failed to mention, you should be able to skip the signup page if you scroll to the bottom. Um, let's see. It's okay. So did you put in, so you actually want to put in pollev.com? So if you click on the bar right there and then just type in pollev.com. Yep, and then click go. Great. And then this is where you can skip joining, I believe. Oh, no. Hmm.
I thought they could text the answer right from their inbox.
You can also do that. Yeah, so if you use a...
Can you go back to your text message? Is that?
I think it was that.
Yeah. Let's see your text message.
Yep.
All right. So...
Yeah, if you try just putting your answer directly in there.
If you just type in your answer and then hit send, it should, it should pop up on the screen.
Sometimes the online version is easier. Sometimes old-fashioned texting is the best move. I think we only have the one for this one, just to give people... Is there another?
Yeah, there's one more.
Oh.
I think so. Yeah.
Oh, great. So folks have, it seems like most, for the most part, gotten the hang of Poll Everywhere. Let us know if you're still having challenges, or we can always just note down your answers on paper, the real old-fashioned way. But if you have already answered the first one, second question coming at you now. Thinking more to that second activity and discussion with the map, what resources or services do you think are still missing from Norfolk? What are folks sort of leaving town to be able to go do that you'd like to be able to do closer to home? Seeing groceries pop up a few times already. Yep. Something we've already heard a lot, so good to see that keep coming through. Connected walking paths. That's a good one. Resounding interest in a grocery store. Awesome. Well, feel free to keep these responses coming as we all figure out the Poll Everywhere platform. Just for the sake of time, I think, let's maybe move on with the next brief segment of presentation and then you'll have more opportunity to continue chatting as small groups in just a little bit.
Thank you. Well, thanks, everyone. Now that we have bummed you out by making you talk about issues and challenges, we want to switch gears and think about what is super and working and what you love about Norfolk. So we're going to talk about setting that vision and understanding the priorities and the strengths and the assets of Norfolk. So whenever we do a master plan, it's really important that we start this process by setting a community vision. So that's why we're here tonight. We want to hear from you. We'll take all of the feedback that we're hearing tonight that we've heard up until this point and come up with a vision statement, much like you would, you know, if you're a business or organization. That vision statement really guides what you're trying to do here, those like overarching values and guiding principles that can guide your future work. So whenever we're creating a community vision, we like to kind of think of it as what do you want to leave for future generations in Norfolk? Because remember, this is a 10 to 20-year planning process, so thinking about not just tomorrow or next year, but over the next 10, 20 years, what is your vision for Norfolk? This can be a compact, high-level statement. It doesn't need to get too in the weeds at this point. It's that visionary, you know, keeping, keeping it at the high level. But then it's really going to be something that as we go through this process, we're going to continue to go back to the vision and make sure that as we talk through the different topic areas in more depth, that we make sure that the vision is guiding that process. And then as we're developing strategies and getting more into the weeds of the plan, how can the vision and subsequent guiding principles really make sure that that's what we're using as the guideposts? So the 2007 master plan had a vision statement. It's kind of nice to kind of reflect back since it's been about 15 years to see what was the vision of residents. Maybe some of you are involved in that planning process. So at that time, the vision, you know, and it saw that town center was going to develop into a traditional, you know, walkable place that's really inhibiting that New England Village character. It was really important at that time that the residential and semi-rural character of Norfolk was preserved and that business and commercial districts thrived and that resources were being used sustainably. So maybe think about, you know, what's still resonating with that vision and what's changed since 2007. And again, just to show you this kind of graphic, this hierarchy of the master plan, the vision statement is truly the thing that's guiding all of the subsequent work. So what we hear tonight will really help to fix that vision statement. So in our next exercise, we want to hear what are Norfolk's strengths and assets? What are things that you can build on in this process? What's going well and should be continued? And what kinds of community values do you hold that you want to make sure is really emulated whenever your planning board, your select board, your town meeting members are making decisions about Norfolk policies and resources? So as Josh mentioned earlier, we've already, you know, started having a lot of conversations where themes have been emerging of some of these values and things that people love about Norfolk. I think from our conversations, it's really clear that residents and community members love this place. Like, it's a lovely town and you love living here and you want to make sure that it stays a good place, that you want to live, raise your family, age here. It's also really important that you're fiscally responsible, that, you know, you have a finite amount of resources and you're making sure that you're musically managed well. You want to have clear direction that's shown through your planning efforts. You've done a lot of planning in town and it's clear that you like to have a strategic vision for moving forward and making sure that you're actually implementing things that you're doing. And then also you have strong recreation amenities and activities and you have a lot of really good town services that you may want to, you know, make sure are sustained through this process. So I think Josh is going to talk through our next activity in small group breakout.
Great, thanks. There's parallel construction between what we just did and now what we're doing in this exercise. So we're thinking about those assets and strengths of the town in much the same way we thought about the challenges. And I think it's important to, in this... And I think it's important to, in this session tonight, connect these two ideas, the long-term vision and sort of that higher-level statement, and the challenges that we're facing day-to-day in Norfolk. It's important to approach solving those challenges strategically so that you're building something even bigger over time. And I think that's what this vision statement is about. So what we'd like to start with is having you all look at, on the Post-it notes again, what are the strengths and assets that you see in the town? What is really the core of what you love about the town and that we can build this vision around and what you want to keep positive? So that would be on the Post-it notes again, and we can organize them in the same fashion around the topics. And then following that, we have a series of what we call spectrums, where we have kind of two polar ends of an idea. In this example here is, how close is Norfolk to your ideal vision? One end of that spectrum is ideal. The other end of that spectrum is not close. And where would you put the marker on that spectrum? Would you be one under the other or somewhere in the middle? And we have a series of questions like that that we'll go through at the tables to give us a sense of where the vision should be headed with the town. So again, your individual tables and staff members will help you through these, and we've got about a similar amount of time for this. So enjoy the conversation.
Go ahead and try to wrap up your conversations on the spectrums, and then we'll do another Poll Everywhere to get a sense of what we're thinking in the room. Looks like we're already getting a few responses in the Poll Everywhere, so feel free to pull your phone back out, and hopefully things are still working from before, but if not, our staff can come around and help with getting you connected back to the Poll Everywhere. First question for you all here is just reflecting on sort of the conversation that you've had at your tables. A little fill-in-the-blank prompt for you. Norfolk is a great place to live because folks are saying it's not overcrowded, not over-commercialized, located by major transportation routes, excellent schools and library, safe small town. Sounds like folks had good conversations around the accessibility spectrum. Next question, I'm going to go ahead and move us to the next slide. Next question is, in 2035, which is the year that this master plan is sort of planning towards, Norfolk will be, fill in the blank there, seeing neighborhood focused. I'm going to guess that was small-town feel. They sort of adjusted the, moved around the words there for us a little bit. Norfolk will be great. Similar. Affordable. Seeing small, so keeping that sort of small-town character, making sure it's neighborhood-oriented, but also affordable to folks who, and safe to folks who want to live here. All right. Last Poll Everywhere for you all. I think it probably just activated, so last fill-in-the-blank is, the future of Norfolk And we'll see what folks are saying. Let's let a few more come in. Successful, I like that. I saw awesome on there. That's a good answer. Norfolk is awesome in the future. Bright, homes, optimistic. I see past, maybe like connected to its past and bridging to the future. All right. Well, again, feel free to keep the answers coming with the Poll Everywheres, and we'll take a look and aggregate all the responses from this activity and the one earlier, and really appreciate everyone's input to help us launch this master plan. I'm going to pass it back to Josh and Andrea to wrap us up.
Thank you, Gloria. And thank you all for your participation this evening. We just have a few items to wrap us up this evening, and we appreciate all of your time and the input. We will be cataloging all the input we received, either digitally or on the tables, and be mining it for patterns. We'll do some analysis on it, and we'll add it with other input that we'll be gathering as well. So this is a process, as you can imagine. We'll be working on this for some time. The projected timeline of this work is out through March of 2024, so about a year from now. We're right now in the really second phase where we're trying to grow the awareness of the master plan. This is our community visioning phase. This phase will last through about the midsummer, at which time we'll be working with the steering committee to build upon all of this feedback and develop a draft vision statement, which will be available for public review as well. From there, in the fall and later in the summer and fall, we'll be shifting toward drafting goals, the more specific information which will fall under that vision statement. And then we'll be moving down into strategies and the implementation that Andrew was speaking of at the beginning. That will move us toward the winter where we're defining priorities and really how you move this vision forward. Here's a timeline which shows a little more of that detail. And you can see with the yellow vertical line highlighting us in April, we will be having additional community workshops that follow up from this one, both in this spring season and then also in the fall as well as we're looking at those goals. So you will have additional moments to engage with this process and to be a part of the building of the content as we move that along. This is our first meeting of this nature, the Visioning Forum, tonight. We're so happy that we had a good crowd this evening, but we would always like to hear your feedback about how we can get crowds out at future events. So if you wouldn't mind giving us a few answers on the Poll Everywhere again. The first is, how do you want to hear updates about the master plan process? How would you like to be engaged? Either by email, flyers that you might see around town, Norfolk Community Television, who are so thankful for the coverage this evening, social media posts, the town website, other outreach tools like the school newsletter or information, trying to get word out through your neighbors. Looks like there's a strong preference for email, and since that is showing up, we invite all of you to actually sign up on your way out if you didn't on the way in. You can sign up for the mailing list to be a part of the master plan's mailing list, and that will get you some regular invitations for future meetings and updates about our process. So thank you for that. We also have a question about virtual or in-person in this still transitionary time that we're all living in. This was an in-person meeting with the NCTV coverage, of course, and people will be able to view this recording. But we also will be trying to have some virtual offerings for people who cannot make it to a community meeting in person. And I think we'll also be trying to have some hybrid options through this process as well. Looks like we've all gotten used to the hybrid approach, and so there's a strong preference for that. So we will endeavor to include hybrid approaches in some of the meetings going forward. And then in addition to hosting our own meetings, we'd also like to show up as a master plan team and get the word out at town events. So are there, what popular local town events should we make sure we attend? We've heard about Norfolk Day, which is coming up in June. And anything else? We've heard a lot about the Town Hill. Farmer's Market, excellent. So we'll have some of our team members circulating at some of these events to help get the word out about what's going on with this process. Excellent. We have heard about the transfer station. It's a hotspot where the news travels. And what else could we do to help support people being involved in this master planning Any other ideas to help get your neighbors out? Barbecue. We'll look into our food budget, see what we can do. Also, if you haven't had a chance to grab a snack pack or a water bottle, you're welcome to. It's no barbecue, but... All right, well, looks like the food budget's the thing to focus on. All right. And Andrew is going to give you some of the very tangible next steps, and then we'll wrap up. So thank you all very much.
Thanks. So as Josh mentioned, this is the first of many things to come. So with today, we're launching the community-wide survey. That'll be the next way that you can give us more input, and hopefully you can share with your friends and family and neighbors. Let them know that we have a townwide survey available. You can scan the little QR code here. It's also on the handout that you grabbed at the door. We also are meeting regularly with the steering committee. You're welcome to join, tune into those meetings, kind of hear the discussion. And as Josh mentioned, we'll be doing some follow-up workshops over May and June in virtual and in-person settings to offer some additional ways for folks to get involved. And then we also have a dedicated project webpage that's giving you lots of information about where we are in the process. We're uploading presentations as they happen, and it kind of gives you some of the background that we went over tonight. You know, what is the master plan? Where are we heading? And as we prepare like those draft materials, those will all be put on our website so that you can go take a look and make sure that you're, you know, staying involved and know what's going on. So again, you can sign up for emails on the website. We encourage you to share this with your friends and family. If folks are like, what's this master plan going on? You can point them to this to kind of get a background. So with that, thank you so much for attending. We hope that this was a good night full of lots of good discussion, and we're happy to, you know, answer any questions, but we really appreciate you coming out tonight. And thanks, and thanks for bearing with us as we got a little late start.